Thank you, may be seated. May I have an approval of the agenda, please? Moved by councillor Ainsworth. Sorry. Oh, with the amendment, sorry. So moved by councillor Ainsworth, seconded by councillor Sepola. All those in favour, it is carried. Some evenings we're very fortunate that we have presentations, and tonight is one of those evenings. Oh, sorry about that. First of all, we have disclosures of interest. Does anybody have a disclosure of interest? Councillor Sepola.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be declaring an interest on report number one, the recommendation report of the Integrity Commissioner. I am the subject of the report, and my understanding is that I am able to participate in the discussion on this matter, but I am not able to vote on the matter as well.
Thank you. Councillor Lauer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will not be participating in item three on the consent agenda. It has to do with an appointment of the DNB, Ron Spencer, and I have had business relationships with Ron Spencer.
Thank you. Any others? Now, on to the fun part of the evening. We are very fortunate tonight to be able to present our athlete of the award tonight. So I will ask everybody involved to come forward, and we'll move forward with it.
Okay, hello, everybody. My name is Jack Marr, and it's my distinct honour and pleasure to present this year's 2019 Athlete of the Year Award. This year's recipient had a standout year in 2019, participating in several competitions locally and internationally in his sports, often placing first, breaking a record or placing in the top tier among his competitors. This year's Athlete of the Year is Adam Hill. Adam has a passion for sports and participates in mountain bike racing, road bike racing, gravel bike racing, downhill skiing, and he is a former ultra runner. Some of his notable achievements of his 2019 season includes setting a course record in the Coast to Coast Gravel Grinder, a 210-mile race in Michigan, winning the epic solo eight-hour solo held in Mansfield, Ontario, winning the Pulse Racing Fall Epic Eight-Hour Solo held locally at Hardwood Hills, and placing fourth overall in the Wyoming Pierre Holes Hundred Mile Race. Aside from his tenacity for sport, Adam has put the same energy and passion into charitable causes. Together with his wife, they have created Pick Your Poison, a yearly trail running event which has raised thousands of dollars for local charities. Sue St Clair, Adam's nominator, mentioned that aside from his consistent race performances, Adam is highly regarded by his fellow racers. He is helpful, supportive, and encouraging. Adam and his wife Heather assist athletes before, during, and after races and events. Furthermore, Sue's understanding of Adam's training schedule gives us a little perspective. Adam not only competes at a high level, but works full-time 12-hour shifts, battles ice and snow while training locally before heading to more temperate locations for competition. A fun fact, in 2019, Adam logged an impressive 23,000 kilometres on his bike, more than some people put on their car. Finally, All Wheels Cycling Club summarizes his influence within our community with the following statements: "His willingness to help his fellow athlete with all aspects of cycling, from the mental side of training and racing to the performance tips to maximize results. It all comes naturally to him. He is always willing to offer advice and cheer on his team members. He is humble about his accomplishments and always seems just as proud of everyone he knows on the course as he is about his own results. With the many wins and podiums Adam has achieved, he is looked upon as a gold standard to many of our athletes, as well as his competitors aspire to be like." I'd now like to invite Adam Hill to the stage to accept this award presented by councillor Hean, councillor Campbell, and councillor Sepola. So did you want to say a few words first? Yeah, okay, okay. Sorry, that's American. All right, and Adam wants to say just a few words before we move on.
Yeah, thank you, Jack. I'd just like to thank the city of Arilia for giving me this award. The one thing I was thinking about coming in, it's like, I'm so happy to have grown up and live in a city like this where we do honour our athletes in such a way, whether it's, you know, high school or people like me now who have actually been at it a long time. It's kind of neat to show a variety, I think, of athletes this way, whether it is like, you know, our local swimmers and what amazing things they're up to, or high school athletes, and, you know, a chance to kind of show even like what, you know, your people that are working in the community and doing this as like more for fun now than anything else. I think it's great. I appreciate it too because, you know, it's such a positive message to show everyone else in the community, especially kids, what's going on. And also just to do something fun like this for City Council amongst all the other agenda issues and everything else going on, I think it's nice to have some positive news on occasion too, right? So thank you very much for honouring me this year. I really, really appreciate that. I know Sue's not here right now, but thank you very much to Sue St Clair for putting me on the ballot, I guess, or whatever you would actually call that. And of course, my wife, thank you very much for putting up with all the training and everything else that you have to endure. So that's it. That's all I wanted to say. Thanks, Jeff. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we don't have any deputations tonight, but we do have minutes. So the minutes of the February 10th, Public Meeting Reading Planning Matters, and February 10th, regular council meeting. So do we have a mover and a seconder? Moved by councillor Clooster, seconded by councillor Campbell, that we approve the minutes of those two meetings? Yes, all those in favour? Okay, thank you. And reports. Our first report tonight is from our Integrity Commissioner. If they would like to come forward, please. Ms Jackson, can I ask you to introduce our Integrity Commissioners for you?
Through you, Madam Chair. In attendance tonight is Principal's Integrity to present their report. The Integrity Commissioners are Jeffrey Abrams and Janice Potowski.
Thank you. And when you're ready, if you'd like to continue, that would be fine.
Thank you very much. Am I turned on here? Yes. Thank you very much for having us this evening. I'm Janice, and this is Jeff, and we are the Integrity Commissioner for the city of Arilia. And we want to just make a few high-level comments regarding the report. I believe that probably everybody has read it, so we're not going to read it chapter and verse. I guess the one thing I want to say right off the bat is we were really impressed with council and senior management for the city of Arilia, and we make a note in that in our report at paragraphs 47 and 48. We were very impressed with the way staff and council diligently seem to be managing things. So we want to say that right off the bat. These reports are always sensitive and a little bit challenging to deal with because our role is to come in. We believe that it's very important for us to provide training and education, but of course, at the end of the day, we receive complaints when they are made, and our job is to come in and investigate independently and fairly and make findings and place them before council in a report. And this is our recommendation report with the findings that we made on this investigation. So we investigated a complaint that we received on October 30th, and the complaint had to do with the allegations that the councillor had contravened the code of conduct in some of his actions, in particular pressuring a municipal law enforcement officer to cancel a ticket instead of following the appropriate policy, raising his voice, intimidating her, and making her feel uncomfortable when he patted her shoulder. So we thoroughly investigated that in an independent and fair manner. And as I say, our role is to bring you the findings and to let you make the decision with respect to an appropriate sanction, whatever that may be. The sanctions that are available under the legislation are primarily a reprimand or up to a 90-day suspension of pay. And that's really a continuum, and we recognize that. There's no magic to any particular number. So what we have recommended in this particular instance is that this is more than just a technical breach, but it's, in our view, something that can be amenable to a course correction. It's also, we believe, a takeaway for elected officials to recognize that they do not have a role that involves interfering in the administration of justice with respect to law enforcement, that is, the administration of justice, that their role does not enable them to direct staff with respect to particular actions on a ticket, as we found had occurred in this case. So there is a very important takeaway, we think, in this particular report. And it's, for that reason, we think that there should be some sanction, but as we say, it's a spectrum, it's a continuum, up to 90 days' suspension without pay. And we leave that to your discretion as to what you feel is appropriate under the circumstances.
Thank you. Any comments? Councillor Sepola.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Ralph Sepola. I am a councillor for Ward Two, as we all know. As many of you are aware, I have been investigated by the Integrity Commissioners on the grounds of intimidating a bylaw officer. I want to first apologize to the bylaw officer, all city staff, Arilians, and my distinguished colleagues on the city council who give their services to this community. Upon reflection, I understand my actions were perceived as inappropriate according to the Arilia Code of Conduct. I should have followed the process, and I am sorry. I take any breach of the Code of Conduct seriously, and I should have known better. As a councillor, I genuinely felt I was only acting on the best interests of a citizen, a constituent who needed assistance, and I feel I have been doing, as I feel I have been doing for many, the better part of 50 years. My intentions were not, my intentions were not to intimidate anyone. There was no intent to bring any discomfort to this individual, and since it was perceived that way, I humbly apologize. Where I thought I was passionate advocating for the community, considering my position on city council, I can now understand how this was interpreted as intimidation. I fully understand that the bylaw officers are also an important part of our community, and I have a deep appreciation for the difficult work they do on a daily basis. My hope is that I won't be judged based on this incident, but the decades and the decades of strong character of work I have done in this community that I love so much. Thank you all for your time, and I look forward to continuing my service to this community, as I said, that I love. And I want to especially thank the Integrity Commissioners for the professionalism you showed. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sepola. Councillor Eamon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to thank the Integrity Commissioners for being with us tonight, and I'd like to thank councillor Sepola for his statement. Madam Chair, the matter before us is extremely serious. It is not just a censure of councillor Sepola's behaviour and the incident described, but a heads-up for all of us at this table. As councillors, we are constantly in public view and have an obligation to behave appropriately at all times with city staff, our council colleagues, and the public. It's been over 30 years since I had the honour of sitting in the mayor's chair, and I can attest that society in Canada is much different today. What was tolerated behaviour of councillors then is no longer acceptable today. This evolution in tolerable behaviours has necessitated the need for codes of conduct and Integrity Commissioners to guide and adjudicate our behaviour. This is unfortunate, but a reality of the diversity in which we live and govern. The report before us is a stark reminder that we must continually be diligent in our behaviours, that our behaviours are aligned with today's norms and values. For those of us who know councillor Sepola, we acknowledge his long and valued contribution to Arilia as a person, as a family man, as an owner and operator of businesses in our community, as a Rotarian, and as a city councillor. His advocacy on behalf of his constituency is legendary. Ralph, I know it is difficult for you to separate, it has been difficult for you to separate your desire to help a consultant from the inappropriateness of the specific behaviour in this instance. I know that you are all so upset and distressed and embarrassed by the very public airing of this matter. And I trust that you will see this as a learning experience, as we all should at this table, and that you will continue to be a valued member of our council and a significant contributor to our community. Madam Chair, I am prepared to move a motion accepting the recommendations of the Integrity Commissioner. Thank you very much. If I have a seconder?
Councillor Campbell, you will second that motion? Are there any other? So I have a motion on the table that is recommended by Principal's Integrity in a report dated February 2nd, 2020, a remuneration of councillor Sepola having been found to have breached the city of Arilia's code of conduct, be suspended for a period of five days, and that the report be posted on the city of Arilia's website for public access. Are there any other comments? All those in favour? It is carried. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to our next report. Are there any parts of this one that should be pulled?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I'm aware of clause four being pulled by councillor Ainsworth for a potential change in direction.
Okay.
And councillor Clooster would like to speak to item three.
Okay. So we're pulling number four for a change of direction and three for it to be spoken to.
Madam Chair, we can put this motion on the floor. After it's read, then councillor Clooster can speak to the item.
Okay. So do I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by councillor Ainsworth, seconded by councillor Campbell. That report, number 2020-3 of council committee, now before council, be adopted with the exception of clause four, which shall be introduced separately. Okay. So councillor Clooster, you wish to speak to clause number three?
Yeah, thank you through you, Madam Chair. Just regarding the request from Kayakdiak with the operation of a non-motorized water vehicle rental business, I'm just wondering through the CAO if there'll be any decisions made for the current year for that temporary kiosk, or are we looking at it into 2021?
Through you, Madam Chair. It is my understanding that staff are going to work towards having a report before council within the next six weeks. So I would hope that there actually could be something for 2020, but it is contingent on the outcome of that report. But they are working to have the report before you sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
And just supplemental, will it be also with a report regarding Kuching Beach Park or just for JB Tudhope?
Through you, Madam Chair. I believe it will only be dealing with the Tudhope Park. But having said that, Madam Chair, what council should also be aware of is your park plan is also going to be before you within the next few months. So there could be a component of that report that would deal with this kind of situation as well. So you'll see those reports in the next few months.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So any further comments? All those in favour? It is carried. Okay, clause four. For those at home, that's Further to Report Number PRCR 20-3 dated February 18th, 2020 from the Parks and Recreation and Culture Department, in exception to Chapter 938 of the city of Arilia Municipal Code, No Noise Be Granted For The Purposes Of Permitting Outdoor Music Until 12:00 AM of June 21st, 2020 for a wedding reception at the Stephen Leacock Museum. Councillor Ainsworth, I expect you want to speak to that.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair, for multiple reasons that I did state last week, as well as a nice, you know, heartfelt, logical discussion from someone from the audience last week as well. I'd be happy to move an amendment to change this from 12:00 AM to 1:00 AM. If I have a seconder, that's great. If not, we can just go to the motion as it sits.
Councillor Sepola, are you willing to second it?
Through you, Madam Chair. The first step, we just do need to get this motion on the floor before the amendment is introduced.
Okay, so the original motion moved by councillor Ainsworth, seconded by councillor Sepola, and the motion reads that clause four, Report Number 2020-3 of council committee, now before council, be adopted. And you have... And you have an amendment? You want to change it?
Through you, Madam Chair. Just in regards to the amendments, and I don't think it's quite on the table.
No, I just hand it back.
Oh, perfect. So if it's okay with councillor Sepola, if we could also add in there something in the lines of this, be a pilot. I'm not sure what that wording would be, but have this approved as a pilot?
As a trial?
Trial, pilot, however you want to word it, just to make councillor Eamon happy.
Through you, Madam Chair, if I may. This is a one-off situation for this one particular individual. If there is another request from an organizer of a special event, that will come back to council as well. So this particular request is for one situation only.
Councillor Eamon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My concern is that there would be relatively little reason for us not to agree with other requests for similar things. I mean, this is a wedding, it's not a unique thing. And my concern is that with almost every weekend consumed by weddings, notwithstanding that some are only the service, not the reception, that there may be, in fact, reactions to this that would be useful for council to understand and be aware of. And so what I was seeking was to ensure that there be some follow-up after this particular wedding to determine whether it has, in fact, caused any issues with respect to the neighbourhood, to the facility, to the length of time to clean up, and staff of that nature. And if that were the case, then we would have on file a rationale for potentially taking a different direction if another request were to come to this table. So that was what I was looking for.
Madam CAO?
Through you, Madam Chair. What I could commit to is if council were to agree would be to have staff provide a CIP memo outlining the impact of the decision. And then if a member of council wanted to pull that CIP and put it on the agenda, they could do so. Or if not, it is the information that I think councillor Eamon would be looking for just in terms of the outcome of the changing the noise.
Thank you. So the amendment is moved by councillor Ainsworth and seconded by councillor Sepola, that the motion now before council be amended to add the following, with the exception that the following be deleted, 12:00 AM, and be replaced with the following, 1:00 AM. Is there any comments pertaining to that? Councillor Lauer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to make a comment on this idea of this being a pilot, I'm not sure what purpose that serves. Every wedding is completely different. The participants and the attendees are completely different. So, I mean, I would almost think that it would make more sense to approve this for the season and then at the end of the season, assess the results of it being ongoing. I mean, maybe this isn't a big demand and most of them will be wrapped up a lot earlier or whatever, but I really don't understand the point of going ahead with a one-off pilot.
Thank you. Councillor Ainsworth.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. Just on councillor Lauer's point, definitely open to have that discussion in the future, but I feel that that would be a separate item if a councillor wanted to bring a report to council and open that up for discussion. I think that's something we can do, but I think that is completely separate from this because this is dealing with one in particular that is kind of dealing with, you know, a scenario. So I think it's a different conversation.
Councillor Clooster.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. I will support councillor Eamon's request with just having just the one-off and getting a report back from city staff and bylaw, and maybe, hopefully, there won't be any other reports from any other outside agencies like the OPP, whatever, that it isn't going to be the party of the summer at Leacock. But I think just do the one-time basis is fine for now.
Thank you. Any other? Councillor Sepola.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the people that have requested it announced, we got the letter, they seem very responsible. And I think we will be surprised that they will adhere to the noise bylaw and everything else that's there as well. So I will be supporting councillor Ainsworth's request here.
Thank you. So I've read the motion. Do I need to immediately read the amendment? Oh, Jay, sorry, it's Counselor Fallas.
Thanks. Through the chair, just a quick comment to provide some context. I thought about this. I can support 12. I think 1 goes too late into the night, and it's very close to the residents of that neighborhood, so I don't think I can support it at this time. But I certainly think we need to address issues around ensuring that the museum has an adequate ability to host these types of venues even late into the night, and I think I'm really hopeful that the master plan will address that in some way. But yeah, unfortunately, I can't support this amendment at this time. Thanks.
Thank you. So voting on the amendment? All those in favor? It is carried. Back to the original motion? On a recorded vote? I haven't got Okay, we've
Madam Chair, members may now proceed to vote.
This is for the, this is for the original motion, is it not? As amended? It's not there yet. Oh, there it is.
Just a preview. Madam Chair, I'll end the vote and read the results. Counselor Campbell, no. Counselor Fallas, no. Counselor Ainsworth, yes. Counselor Heen, yes. Counselor Sapola, yes. Counselor Klooster, yes. Counselor Eamon, yes. Counselor Lauer, no. The motion is carried.
Thank you.
Oh my God, where's my mouse?
So we are now moving on to the I like paper better. The next report, which is the Report Number 2020-3 from the meeting of February the 24th. Oh, sorry about that. Counselor Eamon, this is your report from the Ossom Conference?
Yes, Madam Chair, would you care for me to read the report to my colleagues?
From top to bottom.
It is brilliantly crafted. My apologies for the lateness of the report, but I do believe that it has some timely information in it with respect to the conference that we will be hosting in Urbilie, not this year, but next year, so that hopefully will get turned over to the folks who are responsible for that. And I'm looking forward to attending the conference this year in Bradford. Yeah, Bradford County, Brant County.
Do the members have any questions of Counselor Eamon? Counselor Sapola?
Madam Chair, just a point of order. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be disrespectful. Can you speak up, because some of us around here can't hear you?
I'm practically eating the microphone.
Put the microphone like this, okay?
Okay, thank you. Okay. Do we have a report? Yet I have a seconder. Counselor Klooster? All those in favor? Sorry? Oh, yeah, I better move it. Sorry about that. I'm not, I'm not used to, I'm used to having my paper copy. It's quite all right. So the motion that was moved by Counselor Eamon, seconded by Counselor Klooster, that the report MC 20-04 dated February the 12th, 2020, from Counselor Eamon regarding the Ossom Conference, from May the 1st to 3rd, 2019, be received as information. All those in favor? It is carried. Okay, so now we're on to the supplementary memo, 144 Elgin Street. And Ms. Lewis, you're going to speak to this?
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm just here to answer any questions that might be.
Okay. Do members of council have any questions for Ms. Lewis? Counselor Lauer?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Through you to Ms. Lewis, how much control do we have over architecture?
We have some control over architecture. Our official plan speaks to the design principles, but for the most part, we haven't gotten into great levels of detail with, with the different developers. They've shown you what their proposed building elevations are going to be, and, and that's, in my opinion, it's meeting the intent of the official plan, and so that's what ultimately would get built on the property.
So, if I may, so if we were interested in, you know, sort of creating an image along, not necessarily homogenized or unified, but, you know, we wanted to pick out a few details, we haven't got that ability.
Ms. Lewis?
Through you, Madam Chair. That would be a planning process. So if there were specific designs that you were looking for along the waterfront through an official plan amendment process, which is a public process, that level of detail could be added to the official plan on specific properties, but there would need to be a level of detail as to what, what it would be expected of the developers.
But it is enforceable?
It would be enforceable if it was spelled out in the official plan.
Okay, thank you. I do have some concerns about this, this, this type of development down there. I will be supporting it, just so everybody can relax, but this is a, this is a common element condo, which really doesn't add to, in my opinion, add to a neighborhood that much, right? I mean, it's not a walk-through area. There's, there's no new streets that the public are going to use necessarily. I mean, certainly, I doubt very much that people are going to be prohibited from walking through there, but it would, I think I would have preferred a little bit more of an open feel down in that area. But also the architecture, I feel fairly protective of the vista from the lake, of all places. I realize not everybody's out in the lake, but certainly looking back at the town, I see this as a city of red brick and roofs and peaked roofs and things like that. And I would really like it if we encouraged our developers to, to consider that. I mean, we do make mention of fitting in and things like that, and I think that is an essential component, but I understand that it might be a little bit too late for that, so.
Thank you. Counselor Eamon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick response to Counselor Lauer is, I live on a condominium, and there often are folks walking through our particular, and it doesn't lead anywhere. It's a cul-de-sac, or at least a crescent, I guess you would say. But, so I'm not sure that that's an issue. I did, I did meet with Mayor Clark today, and Jill joined us, as did Josh on the phone, because we were concerned about the letter we received outlining the degree of density on this and the lack of setback from the road. And I just want to clarify, Jill, that the actual property itself has three meters of space from the property line back to the building, even though some of the buildings that would front on the lakeside would have porches or portions of porches on the front of those buildings. So it's, it's not, it's a three-meter. And I do believe later in the day, if I'm correct from an email I got from, from Mayor Clark, who unfortunately, as the chair has said, is unavailable tonight, that though the engineering has not been done on the future of the Centennial Drive, that we would likely be contemplating a 5.5-meter boulevard space that would be on city property, which would be in addition to the three meters that would be on the private property or something of that nature. Do I, do I have that sort of correct?
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, correct in terms of the building setback being, for the most part, three meters. Again, it's just where the site triangles are, where it gets as close as one meter, so it's only in two specific spots for, across the board, the rest of it is three meters. And then for a typical 20-meter road allowance, a typical boulevard and sidewalk of 5.5 meters. So it would include the sidewalk as well within that 5.5. So that's the only point of clarification.
And my only final comment was that, as we chatted this afternoon, it was pointed out to us that, that this is, that we're facing a somewhat unique situation here in the city of Urbilie, because we, we were contrasting it to the lack of space between the buildings and the water in Callingwood, in the shipyards development, and not wanting to do that. And it was pointed out to us that though these buildings are quite close to the road allowance, we do have the park between the road allowance and the lake, so that there is a fair distance of open space down there, and our parks are mature and built up and, and well-used. So this, though this development has the, the challenge that Counselor Lauer put forward of, you know, how it looks and how it fits in and the style of the downtown, hopefully their architect is, will be made aware of that through whatever cycle we go through next, and will have the sensitivity, say, of the people, the architects, say it's doing matcha-dash loss, that it's designed a building to replicate this building in, in the downtown, so it has not the peak heritage of our city, but the brick heritage and, and that original industrial kind of thing. Not that this should be that, but, but something compatible. So I'm hoping this would, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing the final renderings when the architect is done.
Thank you. Any further, Counselor Sapola?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, we met the mayor in the mayor's office with the mayor and the developers, and they committed to having this as a class, a class development. And I just want to thank Mr. Morgan for the addendum that we got, that we got, the letter that we got, explaining what the setbacks and everything else were. That made me feel a little more comfortable in supporting this, and Mr. Greer's comments were well-taken, that we needed to look at it, and we did. And I think the developers have committed, as council, as the mayor, indicated to the mayor and a few of us that were sitting there, that it will be a first-class development. And I think the question I asked the council, can we get rid of the veneer and all that outside? And they sort of made a commitment that there wouldn't be bricks and mortar, basically, wherever possible. So I think I'm satisfied that they will do a class act down there.
Thank you very much. Any further comments? So I need a mover and a second for the motion? Moved by Counselor Ainsworth, seconded by Counselor Sapola, that further to the public meeting of council held on February the 10th, 2020, council approved the draft plan, the subdivision application 43T 19001, Paul Fredeko Urbilie, 144 Elgin Street, Ventures Inc., 144 Elgin Street, including the conditions of approval for final approval, as set out in Schedule B of the supplementary memo dated February the 21st, 2020, and that council approved the plan of common elements condominium 43CD-19001, Paul Fredeko Urbilie, 144 Elgin Street, Ventures Inc.,-144 Elgin Street, including the conditions of approval for final approval, as set out in Schedule C of the supplementary memo dated February the 21st, 2020, and that council approved the application for zoning bylaw amendment D14-882, Paul Fredeko Urbilie, 144 Elgin Street, Ventures Inc.,-144 Elgin Street, as set out in Schedule D of the supplementary memo dated February the 21st, 2020, and that in accordance with subsection 45.1.4 of the Planning Act, minor variance applications may be applied for before the second anniversary of the passage of zoning bylaw amendment, by law, 2020-13, notwithstanding subsection 45.1.3 of the Planning Act. Are there any further comments from the members of council? All those in favor? It is carried. So our next one is the supplementary memo on Corbey Street? And you're up again, Ms. Lewis. Do members of council have any, have any questions on, on this one? Counselor Klooster?
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. I'm glad that the letter came through today with the, for the surrounding neighbors, that the applicant is willing to work with the concerns with the drainage and the fencing. I'm just wondering if the 8.2 height fence will be coming to committee adjustments, or does it, or there be any negative impacts with that?
Through you, Madam Chair. This process essentially takes care of that, so if you approve this zoning amendment, they will be allowed to have 8.2-foot, high-foot fence, so we don't need to go through committee of adjustment.
Just to supplement, so with the, the site plan approval with the drainage, will there be like a sign-off or a follow-up with that to make sure if there is no kind of incidents in the future, and how we mitigate that?
Ms. Lewis?
Through you, Madam Chair. So there, for the two-unit dwelling that was approved, there was a lot grading plan approved that had berms and, and ditches to ensure no negative impact. If this three-unit, the third unit in the basement gets approved, they then will go through site plan approval, and they'll have to supply a stormwater brief, so a little bit more level of detail and analysis on how the stormwater is going to be dealt with. And then there will be inspections done by engineering staff to make sure that they've built the, the parking area and the berms and the ditches in accordance with that stormwater brief.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Lauer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, one of the concerns of the neighborhood is privacy, and there is some talk of addressing it through trees, plantings. I got that right? And I think even in the response from the proponent, they pointed, pointed out that the trees will be small and will be, it'll take a while to fill in and become effective, right? So it's essentially saying there will be privacy for the next person who owns the house next door, basically. Is there any way we can enshrine some sort of caveat that these trees be of a certain caliper, that they be a little larger than maybe perhaps normally required?
Ms. Lewis?
Through you, Madam Chair. Typically, the way that planning staff deals with it is we either require the privacy fence, or we require coniferous plantings. And so in this case, with the privacy fence being provided and at the height of 8.2 feet, planning staff hasn't included in the zoning amendment that plantings also be included. The applicant has indicated their willingness to, to plant, so the council would need to give that direction if you wanted to insert a particular caliper size. But again, I wouldn't even be able to advise you on, on that particular size. So my recommendation to you is that we implement the privacy fence, and that we leave the plantings and that we leave the plantings to the negotiation between the applicant and the city during site plan approval process.
Okay. In other words, a leap of faith, basically, right? That the developer may be agreeable. There's no way we're going to make it happen.
So planning staff is not recommending that happen? The planning staff is focusing on the privacy fence as the way to mitigate the impact?
Thank you.
Sorry to push this, but, so what is the mechanism if we did want to ensure that there were plantings and they were significant?
Ms. Lewis.
So I suppose council could give us direction that as part of the site plan approval process, you could give us specifics about what councils looking for, for us to include as part of that site plan approval process. But again, I'm not prepared to advise you as to what those should be and what those plantings should be, or the size of the plantings.
You're referring to the calipers. You're not informed enough to, or you're not informed on calipers. Okay, thanks.
Any further comments? Okay, I have a motion before me. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Councillor Eamond, moved by councillor Eamond, seconded by councillor Ainsworth. That, sorry? Yes, councillor Ainsworth. That further to the public meeting of council held on February the 10th, 2020, council approved zoning bylaw amendment application number D14-888, William Thornton, 309 Colburn Street West, in accordance with the zoning bylaw amendment set out in the supplementary memo dated February 25th, 2020. And in accordance with subsection 37-17 of the Planning Act, no further notice of the amended zoning bylaw amendment is required to be given due to the minor nature of changes that occurred during the public meeting of council held on February the 10th, 2020. Any further discussion? All those in favour? councillor Sepola, are you in favour? Okay, carried. We're on to the consent agenda. And we have a video Canada. There aren't any deputation motions. Oh, yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair. On the consent agenda at this time, I am just aware of item three being pulled. Councillor Lawer has declared a conflict on that item.
Okay. So do I have a mover and a seconder? Councillor Ainsworth, seconded by councillor Campbell. That council adopt the recommendations as set out on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of council held on March 2nd, 2020, with the exception of recommendations with respect to correspondence, item three, which shall be introduced separately. All those in favour? It is carried. And do I have a mover and a seconder for, moved by councillor Fallas, seconded by councillor Ainsworth. That the recommendation with respect to correspondence, item number three, on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of council held on March 2nd, 2020, be adopted. All those in favour? It is carried. And you can come back. And we are on to bylaws. Okay, so may I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by councillor Fallas, seconded by councillor Ainsworth, you're busy tonight. That the following bylaws be enacted. 2020-12, a bylaw to establish 0.3-metre reserve as a public highway, 426 Old Muskoka Road. Okay, thank you. -2020-13, amendment number 78 to bylaw number 2014-444, the zoning bylaw for the city of Aurelia, Paul Fredesco, Aurelia 144 Elgin Street Ventures, 144 Elgin Street. 2020-14, amendment number 79 to bylaw number 2014-444, the zoning bylaw for the city of Aurelia, 309 Colburn Street West. 2020-15, a bylaw to repeal and replace chapter 101 of the city of Aurelia municipal code, farmers' market management committee. All those in favour? It is carried. You know that little symbol I did? And do I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by councillor Ainsworth, seconded by councillor Campbell. That bylaw number 2020-16, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meetings held on March 2nd, 2020, be enacted. All those in favour? It is carried. Okay, do we have any announcements tonight? councillor Eamond.
I had it on. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mayor Clarke asked me to extend a huge shout-out to all of those involved in the Winter Games this past weekend, to the organising committee, to the hundreds and hundreds of volunteers that helped run the programme as smoothly as it did, to the athletes and coaches and officials that attended, and to all the visitors who were in our city over the weekend. Though we had a little bit of snow on Thursday that caused some discomfort in getting around and somewhat interfered with the opening ceremonies, the rest of the weekend was a beautiful showing for our city. And so it's very much appreciated the help and energy of everyone involved.
Thank you. Any further, councillor Lawer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry, I'd like to add to that. Just that there's all kinds of benefits to running events like the Winter Games. But one of the ones we forget is that the entire community is exposed to some very different sports and very, was a, you know, very different experience as far as wandering around the city. I've stumbled onto wheelchair curling, which was unbelievable. These guys operate without the advantage of having sweepers. And the games were as exciting and as subtle and as tight as any you see on television. So that was an eye-opener, because I don't think I was, I'm going to see that otherwise. And I know Ralph, you were there at the Ringette final, which was, which is an amazing sport. And hopefully that's going to grow in Aurelia. The bowling alley was absolutely packed once again. And it was a madhouse. And everywhere, everywhere I went and everywhere that was reported, people went. It was, it was, it was a good scene. So congratulations to everybody.
councillor Sepola.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really want to pass a thank you to Mr Jed Levine and the volunteers. Excellent, excellent job and the events that I attended in Aurelia. But councillor Lawer talks about ringettes, the sports itself. I made a commitment to this lady that was there that I would look into and talk to Parks and Rec and see if we can get a ringette league within Simcoe County, because I know Toronto has one. And that, and I think it's an upcoming sport. It's the sport of the future. And those young ladies, I couldn't believe how great skaters they were. It was just incredible, just incredible. So I think Aurelia should be proud of all the volunteers, our staff in particular. I want to thank our staff for the excellent job they did and the way it was promoted and everything else. I know we had a few people from Toronto come up and there were acquaintances and they really enjoyed it and they, it had been their first time to Aurelia. And they said, wow, what a community, that you guys can put on almost a national event only for Ontario. But, and they were amazed what it was. So a lot of kudos will go to our staff and the volunteers.
Thank you. I know that the events that I watched were impressive. I couldn't believe how these young men moved across the rink doing sledgehockey. I can't move that fast on two skates, let alone on sledgehockey. So it was really quite impressive to watch. So councillor Fallas.
I thought, just on that note, I'd just like to say, I was at the medal ceremony for sledgehockey and they happened to have an extra gold medal. So I brought it here to donate to the city hall there, to the mayor's office. So I debated wearing it during the council meeting, but I thought I might be overstating my sports prowess a bit much there. But yeah, if anyone wants to wear it, let me know, yeah.
Thank you. So do we have anybody that's speaking in our open forum? Then I'll just read the, so each speaker should be required to provide their name and whether they are resident or non-resident. Each speaker shall speak only to the issues within municipal jurisdiction. Each speaker shall be limited to a maximum of five minutes. Each open forum period should be limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Speakers shall not answer questions from, members shall not answer questions from the speakers. And if a question is directed to council which requires staff input, the mayor may request the speaker to put their concerns in writing. So if you'd like to come forward, we need the... Oh, just a, wait a minute, I better turn you... And your name and...
Thank you, your worship, and good evening, councillors. I'm Dr Mike Francis. I've served this community for 35 years. And I'm here to speak about a matter which is uncommon for me, which is an indication of its importance to approach council about this. But I think the report of the integrity commissioner should be stayed on the grounds that it's inappropriate, flawed, inaccurate, and fails to follow their mandate. The inappropriateness is, the report is to be an opinion, not an investigation. It's flawed because they were not to do an investigation, but an inquiry. It's inaccurate because I disagree with, and if you want me, I'll go through all the different articles, but there's about 25 of them and perhaps more, depending on my further investigation. And I'm being brief because you told me I have five minutes. And I'm supported in the legal opinion by a Mr George Rusty I, who is Canada's leading municipal lawyer. And I quote from his correspondence that the legislation is specific in referring to possible duties of an integrity commissioner and in conducting an inquiry, not an investigation, which together with the integrity commissioner's duty to report his or her opinion to council, rather than a litigious proceeding adverse to the interests of the councillor. We did not hear an opinion. We heard repetitively, verbally, and in his report, that this was an investigation. If it was an investigation, he should have talked to the victim, me. I was not spoken to. He would not return my calls. I made four to his office. And also in his report, he talks about speaking to your manager of legislative services. That's a joke. I sent him the manager a letter November 7th. Got no reply. I went to the office, they wouldn't talk to me. So I'm the victim here. I just wanted to go home and rake leaves that night. Thank God Mr Sepola was available to at least listen to me. Thank you.
Dr Francis, are you a resident?
Yes, I am. 260 Mississauga Street West.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking.
And that's why I approached Ralph, he's my ward two.
That's fine, thank you. Are there any further people that wish to speak in the open forum? Okay, may I ask for a motion for, moved by councillor Sepola, seconded by councillor Ainsworth? All those in favour? We are adjourned.